I will call the meeting to order at 7:03. Just have a couple of announcements. Those attending tonight's meeting should be aware that the meeting is being audio and video recorded by APAC and ASRSD. Any audience members who wish to record any part of the meeting must inform the chair, who will announce the recording. This is to comply with the Mass Wiretap statute. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Per the Air Shirley Regional School Committee policy, BEDH, public comment is a discuss is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the school committee. It is a citizen's opportunity to express an opinion on issues of school committee business as posted on the meeting agenda. Citizens will have three minutes to express their views. Can I have everyone please stand for the pleasure of the meetings?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we call the roll for us, please? Mr. Brezner here.
Here.
Mrs. Ranger here.
Here.
Mr. Quinsey.
Here.
Mrs. Reschutz.
Here.
Ms. Dan.
She on Zoom?
She on Zoom? Okay. If she happens to join, can you just let me know? Thank you. Okay, so next on our agenda is our high school representative, Ms. Ana Sanchez. Hello, Ana.
Hello. All right, so the first thing I have to talk about today is college, of course. I've received all of my applications back, and I've been accepted to all the schools I got into, uh, my work. But I've narrowed it down to two decisions, so Bridgewater and Clark University. It's difficult because they both gave me a lot of money, so.
Good problems.
Bridgewater gave me, yeah, um, they gave me a lot of money, so in the end I would have to pay like fourteen thousand a year maybe. And then, um, Clark originally gave me like twenty-six thousand, which wasn't a lot compared to their tuition and stuff, but then they gave me a lot of grants. So in the end, I'd have to pay like the exact same amount of money. But right now I'm leaning towards Clark because they do a free master's program, and that just sounds very appealing, you know? Uh, my second thing is that I'm actually working with Mr. Deppi to do dance classes at the elementary school, or like dance classes, but just like a time that we can all come together and, you know, learn some moves. Um, and then in my government class, we're working on doing our one-minute speeches. So we all get to choose a topic, and then we have to go in front of the class and do just like a one-minute thing, as if on the floor of the floor Congress and stuff. And I chose to do mine on, um, the importance of having diversified dance clothing within the dance community, such as having, um, plus-size leotards, um, having tights and shoes that match all skin tones instead of just like the classic ballet pink and things like that. And then lastly, for my EP classes, we're starting to take our mock exams. Um, we had our Lit one last Saturday, but the power went out, so we couldn't see the time, um, but after that it was fine. So yeah, that's everything.
Does anyone have any questions?
So I'm just curious, at our last meeting, there was some student participation, and there was definitely a lot of discussion around the schedule changes.
Oh, no.
So just interested, what have you heard, anything recently, and kind of your opinion on what you might have heard?
Yeah, um, with the waterfall change and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Well, my sister's a freshman, so she was like, "I don't want that to change," and blah, blah, blah. And, uh, she was like, "It's gonna be more homework." But, um, from what I've heard from teachers and things, that it's, it's gonna be the same thing anyway. It's just different schedule. Um, I, I mean, I'm moving, but I'm not opposed to it. Doing the, the four blocks a day can be very tiresome, but, um, I also like it a lot because I get to have more time with my teachers, but then again, you'd be having them every day, right? Is that how it works?
Yeah.
So essentially, it's the same thing, so.
So I think the seniors, have they kind of been left out of the discussion, not, but just because you're not gonna be impacted by it?
Yeah.
So I'm sure maybe that's not spreading as much through your class as it might be through, um, the younger grades, but.
Yeah, I've heard from some of the juniors that, um, they're upset that they might not have senior privileges, which is something, but then again, I, it doesn't really affect me, but yeah, I've definitely heard from it from my sister, so.
So for the current schedule, have you had the current schedule for how, for the entire time that you've been?
Yeah.
Um, how do you find the, found the length of the classes? What is it, seventy-nine minutes?
Um, some classes are worse than others, depending on the topic. Um, I find that with time that's used wisely, it goes by like super fast. Especially in like my Lit class, we find that there's no time at all because our brains are just constantly going in that class. But, um, I do think that it can become a lot after the, the repetitive-ness of it after a while. Um, I actually, I don't know if it's gonna be similar to like the middle school schedule, but I really liked having all my classes every single day. I thought it was kind of helpful, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is your class starting to talk about senior activities at all?
Yes. I've heard talks about like woo-socks games and everything, so that's exciting because if I end up going to Clark, I get like discount my tickets because it's a Worcester, which is nice.
I was gonna say, you're two schools, and I'm not really familiar with Bridgewater, but one, Worcester's obviously more city.
Yeah.
So you kind of have, you know.
Yeah.
Two different worlds there that you can pick from.
Yeah.
Kind of nice.
Yeah, for sure.
Whichever one appeals to you more.
Yeah, um, I liked Bridgewater because I could bring my car my first year, but then my dance teacher told me, she was like, "Ana, it's probably better that you don't have your car the first year, so you can actually make friends." It's like, that sounds like a good idea, but, yeah.
Yeah, the car gives you an easy escape.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and do you know what you're gonna major in?
Um, it depends on the school because Bridgewater has a secondary education major, so if I went there, I'd do secondary and, um, I would double major English. Um, but if I go to Clark, I'm gonna major in English minor education, and then for my masters, do teaching.
You're gonna be an English teacher?
Yes.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
I'm sure Ms. Witt and Ms. Passa are probably doing it. That's great.
If you end up in Clark, it'll be important to know that, um, to go from the Clark pool to the Atkinson pool takes forty-nine minutes, so in case, like, you might get, did your daughter tell you diving practice was at Clark, and you were at Clark, and there was no one there, takes forty-nine minutes? I'm pretty sure it does, so keep that in mind.
That's very useful.
And I'll, that's like right in the parking lot. All right, well, thank you. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
We always appreciate your updates. Okay, so I'm gonna move on to public participation. If anyone would like to speak, if you could come up to the podium and address the, um, school committee with your name and the town that you live in, and just keep in mind again that we're limited to three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Ashley Pennard. I live here in Air. I have sent you guys a couple of emails, and I had a really great conversation with Dr. Renda, but I'm just here to kind of follow up and go over a couple of concerns that I have. Um, so I'm here due to several concerns that I have, um, at ACP, at Page Hilltop. Um, we've been going there as a family for three years now, and the changes that have occurred this year caused us to look for alternate childcare. Um, we really don't wanna leave the program, but the changes have made it, um, difficult, and it's not accommodating for our working family. I believe these concerns deserve a more in-depth discussion, but to summarize, uh, the changes have been made to the hours of operation, fees, vacation schedule, and procedures. Um, it's also been a high staff turnover, along with a lot of families that have left the program, pulling their kids out. A lack of communication from the administration, and then just a general feeling of unhappiness among the staff, and then, you know, that trickles down, and then to the students. Um, and this is a program that we were previously very happy with. Um, these are not just concerns that are shared from me, but shared by many other family members, and that's both at Page Hilltop and Laura White. Some of these parents have joined us here tonight, many sent emails, letters of concern, and then others have asked me to just pass along that they share these same concerns that I have. Uh, we do not feel the changes that have been made, um, were made with considering the effect it has on the families and the staff there. Um, the changes were made to a successful self-sustaining childcare program, and it feels like it was made by people who self-admittedly don't have firsthand knowledge of the program and how it was working. The families and the staff are not given any input on these decisions, and the communication of the changes has been almost nonexistent. All of this seems to be done in an effort to increase the preschool program at the school, uh, which isn't an option for all of us to use. And I just feel the goal should be to support a program that has been working for the past twenty years, um, that does accommodate working families who are on a budget, instead of forcing us into a program that would not work for us. Uh, we love ACP, we just wanna find a way to protect it, protect the great things about it, maintain the amazing teachers and staff, get back to the welcoming feeling that used to exist when you walked in the door with your kids, or dragged them in the door, as some of you may be familiar with. And we just wanna get back to that, um, an affordable program that is for working families that, you know, have timeframes and places to get to. Uh, so there's a lot more details and concerns that I have, but in the interest of time, I just wanted to give you just overviews. If this is the future of ACP, um, if we have to wait week to week to know what the hours will be, or if they're gonna be open on vacation, um, then we're gonna have to look for alternate childcare. Um, and I know that a lot of other families feel the same way. Um, just last year, we spent over fourteen thousand dollars, um, at ACP. It was worth every penny. I'm not complaining about the price, but if we're gonna spend that much money, I'd at least like to have a conversation before the schedules changed and these drastic changes are made. Uh, there is a reason that people have chose ACP, that people choose the ACP preschool program, and we just wanna get back to that. I think it's time that we take a serious look at what's going on, and hopefully we're able to improve it. So thank you so much for listening to my concerns, and I look forward to future discussions about this.
Anyone online, Michelle?
No.
Thank you, thank you for, for coming and expressing your concerns. We as a board will, will, um, be talking to the administration. I believe that there is a presentation coming up at a future school committee meeting. It's not on tonight's agenda, um, but we'll be happy.
February fifteenth.
February fifteenth to hear about the changes and what's happening at ACP. And I do wanna just point out one thing. I don't, I know you did send an email, and I don't want you to take any lack of response from a school committee member as disinterest. We typically have a policy or procedure that one of us will respond, and one of us, when one of us responds, the rest don't. So I don't want you to think that because you sent an email, you didn't get responses from all of us, that we ignored you or didn't see your email. Um, we just have that, because we can't have a forum on anything, and we don't wanna have one person saying something that another person, you know.
Absolutely.
That's just the policy. So I just wanted to relay that as well. I didn't want you to feel like anyone ignored you or wasn't hearing your concerns.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm sorry, before I move on. Okay, great, thanks. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda, which tonight includes the, um, January eighteenth regular session meetings, minutes per release, um, and then also a warrant memo which, I'm just pulling it up. So the warrant memo is dated February second, twenty-twenty-three. It has accounts payable warrant eleven oh six, uh, for three hundred and forty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. Payroll warrant sixteen, dated January twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, twenty, is that right? Should it say twenty-twenty-three?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Um, for nine hundred and seventy-six thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents, and payroll warrant sixteen point one, dated January twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, for two thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty cents. So I will, um, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Any other, um, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're gonna move on to new business, which tonight is approval of grants awarded. Dr. Renda.
Thank you. We have three grants to present to you tonight that we have been awarded, and we are looking, uh, for the school committee to vote to accept them. The first is breakfast, breakfast after the bell. We are awarded seven thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. This is a competitive state foundation grant, and the funds will be used to purchase four commercial Vitamix blenders, one for each school building, and two stainless steel workstations. We are also awarded a financial literacy grant of fifteen thousand dollars. It's a competitive state grant. These funds will be used to support the high school financial literacy curriculum, in addition to career financial fair to be conducted in the spring of twenty-twenty-three in collaboration with the, um, middle school and elementary schools. And finally, we were awarded a school nutrition equipment grant, two thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars for Page Hilltop, one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for Laura White, and two thousand one hundred and thirty dollars for the middle school. This is also a competitive state grant. It's federally funded. Funds will be used to purchase a Cambro cold buffet tabletop units for the middle school Page Hilltop in LAW.
Could you explain what breakfast after the bell is, and what Vitamix commercial blenders are?
Sure. Well, the, the Vitamix is, that's gonna be used to make smoothies. But the, the breakfast after the bell grant is a grant to serve breakfast to students after school has already started. Um, typically now, one of the things that we do is students come in, and they will get breakfast as they come in off the bus and bring that to a classroom, or eat it in the cafeteria or another spot. The after the bell is for students who might not eat before school. They will still have the option to get breakfast and eat that first thing in the morning. In the elementary schools, it would be during like morning meeting. But in the middle, in the, the high schools, that would actually be during some, some class time.
Um, noticing that two, two-thirds of our grants are around food services, was that a particular focus for, um, Mr. Mooney, or is it just like there happened to be?
There happened to be.
Happened to be, okay.
Yeah, these came out at, in a cluster, and they were all due around the same time.
Yeah, okay.
And there was a lot of repetition.
Yep, you can reuse, yep.
Yes.
Totally.
Yes.
Great.
All right, it's nice to see you. Just coming in.
They are, we actually got some information on, on one today that we'll be sharing probably at the next school committee meeting, and, um, they are, they are coming in steadily now.
Please send our thanks to Mr. Mooney.
Will do.
All right, um, so I will entertain a motion that we approve the, or accept the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, um, school year grants awarded as outlined in the memo dated tonight for Mr. Mooney.
Make a motion that we approve the grants outlined in the memo presented.
Seconded. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so those are approved. Thank you. Um, and now we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Well, thank you. Um, last week, uh, or late last week, Mr. Plunkett, Mr. Brezner, Mr. Rupert, myself, met with Mac Reed. He's a former superintendent in Shirley, but he is currently working for Myers, um, and he is our consultant for the, for the discussion of the population study for Air and Shirley. Um, Mac will be attending the school committee meeting February fifteenth, uh, in order to present on the population study and discuss the implications of the study. Um, it is, I, I will share that, um, Mr. Reed had very kind things to say about members who are on the school committee when we regionalized, and I believe that was, there was three of you, if I'm not correct, um, Mrs. Ranger, Mr. Quinsey, and Mrs. Reschutz, well, very nice things to say. Um, I'm gonna give you a little information about the statement of interest. Um, this did come up at the town, at the select board meeting, um, earlier this evening, and I will be presenting, um, the process of the statement of interest at the next school committee meeting, but just to give you a, a little background, uh, the Massachusetts School Building Authority has opened the twenty-three, uh, twenty-twenty-three Statement of Interest, um, period for core programs. The deadline for submitting core programs is Friday, April fourteenth, at eleven fifty-nine PM. We will present at the next school committee meeting about the process and the school committee's responsibilities. Also, um, ACP restructuring for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year. At the next school committee meeting, uh, Ms. Mary Beth Higgins, Director of the Air Shirley Extended Day Enrichments Program, which is actually the name of the program now, uh, will present on the restructuring of ACP program, which will, which has already taken effect, um, but some of the final changes will take place for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The program is largely remaining, remaining the same, uh, with small changes in programming that will not affect current families. Uh, we plan to share all the information on the program and the changes of the families prior to the school committee on February fifteenth.
I'm, Dr. Renda, do you, in terms of some of the concerns that we've heard in the email, and just curious, is that something that we'll kind of highlight, what some of the concerns are?
We can, absolutely. Um, one of the, for instance, one of the changes is the, uh, it, the program was closed during winter break this year. It's typically open. Um, this is a childcare program, and if you look, most, if not all, childcare programs usually shut down that week. Um, so having talked to, to Mrs. Higgins, we made the decision that we would, we would fall in line with that. People running those programs need a break also. We will highlight, yeah.
Okay, that was really gonna say, I'm not saying that we need to do it now, but it might be good.
Yes.
As you're presenting on the fifteenth, we.
We will go over some of those changes. That was really the major change. Um, there was a change in some of our ninety-minute early release, um, but the, the program has mostly remained unchanged this year. Probably more changes in the extended day program over at, in Shirley, which is now part, um, of this program. Right. We do have some college acceptances, uh, that were submitted. Um, I think it's been a while since we read these, so instead of reading the new ones, I think I'll go through all of the college acceptances, if that is okay with the school committee. Um, we have Bates College, Bridgewater State University, Endicott College, Pittsburgh State University, Framingham State University, Franklin Pierce University, La Salle University, Merrimont, Manhattan College, Merrimack College, Plymouth State University, Purchase College, Regis College, Roger Williams University, St. Anselms College, St. Michael's College, Salem State University, Salve Regina University, Suffolk University, the New Schools College of Performing Arts, University of Massachusetts Amherst, University of Massachusetts Boston, University of Massachusetts Lowell, University of New England, University of New Haven, University of Rhode Island, University of Southern Maine, Westfield State University, and Worcester State University.
And the sports update was submitted by Steve Kendall, uh, so he wishes to share. Congratulations to the boys and girls track teams, both of which, uh, won the Midland Wachusett League Championships last Friday night. The team will compete at the Central Mass Championships at Pittsburgh High School on Saturday morning, February tenth, that's this Saturday. Senior Brian Holmes became just the sixth player in school history to score one thousand points in basketball, knocking down a free throw in the second quarter of Friday night's win over Bromfield. Girls' basketball team has already clinched the state tournament berth after wins over Lunenburg and Bromfield last week. Karli Ewa had a goal and two assists to lead the girls' co-op hockey teams to a four-one win over East Bridgewater. The team clinched its first state playoff berth in years, improving to ten, three, and one on the season. Boys' hockey has won two consecutive games and still has a chance at reaching the postseason. Shear will be competing at a competition in West Boylston, and both middle school basketball teams have had outstanding seasons and will wrap up with games on Tuesday and Thursday of this week. Both teams are at home, starting at three-thirty PM.
I will add to the sports update that we lost two fiberglass panels in the gym Friday night.
I was about to say, do we wanna talk about that?
All these winds, and then we look.
Um, it was a very windy night, very cold night. Two of the panels blew out onto the roof of the high school. Mr. Plunkett and Mr. Briggs really facilitated the work of getting that boarded up through, Boarded Up Boston, which is, I believe, a company that either the fire department or, or, um, police department recommended, they were able to board that up, uh, sometime on Saturday, took most of the day. We are currently awaiting an engineer to come in and look at the panels that are still standing and the board, uh, the boarding up job to see if, um, we can get it all clear to use the gym. As of right now, the gym cannot be used until we have a, um, clearance from an engineer. So a lot of the games are being rerouted to the middle school.
Poor Steve Kendall.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Is there any timeframe, expected timeframe, or anything about when?
We thought there was a possibility that, that engineer might come today. We're hoping tomorrow, um, but that is the best information that I have right now. If Mr. Plunkett is on the line, he might have, he might have more. He's been dealing with the insurance company on that.
Uh, yeah, I saw an email, uh, from the engine, there, he's coming out Friday.
And so, so this engineer is just inspecting the boarding up that's been done now, and if that's approved, we could continue, or does there have to be replacement?
I believe he is checking the, not only the boarding up, but the existing panels to see if they are structurally sound and not in danger of falling in. Correct.
Now, just a curiosity question, is that something that is, um, like, the building inspector imposing? Like, who, whose rule is it that this has to be inspected before we can use it as?
I believe it is, is that the building inspector bill, or is that the insurance company?
The building inspector will not sign off, uh, on occupancy until we have an engineer come out and weigh in on this.
Okay. I figured it had to have something to do with, with that, but just wanna make sure. And this is something that insurance covers, will cover?
We think so.
We hope so.
Think and hope so.
Okay.
Start passing the hat. Let's start passing the hat.
Yeah, right. Anyone else have any questions about the superintendent's report?
Just adding to it, the, um.
Oh, swim.
The Bromfield swim and dive team, which Darren was the captain of, Catherine was the captain of, and Sierra is the captain of this year, won the league championship at Tantosco last week. Just, I mean, it's a, it's a big step. There are seventeen teams in that league, like Tuukspri, Grotten Dossel, things where I mean, there are some big teams in there. It's a, the, uh, overall win for Bromfield, the girls won first, and the boys are, I think, ended up in fifth, an overall win for Bromfield. They start, uh, the sectionals, uh, the girls placed two relay teams and eight swimmers in the sectionals, which will be a Super Bowl Sunday at seven AM, starting in Springfield. And then the state tournament is two weeks from then, which will be at the MIT facility.
Thank you for, for letting us know. I apologize for missing out.
Is the, um, is that sectional, the one that's in Springfield, is that what used to be at BU?
No, that's just the state tournament, which would be last year at MIT this year.
The college acceptances, um, how do those get updated? Just because I know.
Students submit to Mrs. Wallace and the, the school counseling department.
They need to submit a copy.
So the students need to, okay.
Well, feel free to do it if your student's not going to.
We'll, we'll take them from any family member.
We'd like to add to that list.
We have a few in my family that will add to this list, yeah.
Every year you, uh, feel free to, to shout out your acceptances to me.
Um, yeah, there are additional from Fairfield University that should be on here, Bryant College, um, and, uh, Sacred Heart, or will be added soon.
All right.
Get those acceptances to Terry Wallace.
Three great additions.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else before we move on? All right, so we're gonna move on to, um, item nine, which is ongoing business. It's the fiscal year twenty-four preliminary budget update and discussion. Dr. Renda and Mr. Plunkett.
Thank you. Uh, we'd like to start with our draft district vision, as we did last time. That is to create a dynamic, engaged learning community that provides equitable access and opportunity for all members, and empowers students to achieve at high levels by fostering intellectual rigor, creative expression, social emotional wellbeing, and the agency to pursue meaningful, meaningful paths and thrive as responsible citizens. Tonight's presentation will include the fiscal year twenty-four budget, the assessments, and any questions that you may have. In November and December, we conducted needs assessments with all departments. On January third and eighteenth, there was a budget discussion held with the regional school committee. On January eighteenth, the fiscal year twenty-four preliminary budget was presented to the regional school committee. We currently are awaiting, um, the new governor's, um, budget. We expect to have that the first week of March. On February
that the first week of March. On February 6th, last night, we presented the preliminary budget to the select board and finance committee in Shirley. Earlier this evening, at 6 o'clock, we presented the preliminary budget to the Air Select Board and Finance Committee. At the next school committee meeting, we will present the fiscal year final budget presentation and public hearing at 6:30. On March 7th, the regional school committee will hopefully certify the fiscal year '24 budget. On April 24th, will be the Air Annual Tell Meeting. We will give a presentation if needed, but we'll be there to answer questions if not. And on May 9th, we will be at the Shirley Annual Tell Meeting with a presentation if necessary, or to answer any questions that they may have. Next, we're gonna talk about the district student enrollment. For fiscal year '23, there are 1,636 students. That's an additional 14 students since last year. The total ASRD, ASRD population, including out-of-district students, is 1,669. The high school currently has 394 students. That's an additional 26. Over last year, Air Shirley Regional Middle School has 367. That's down 23 students from last year. Laura A. White has 343. That is an additional 19 students. That is a, that should not be a negative. My apologies. And Page Hilltop is at 532. It is down eight students since last year. Next, we're gonna look at the choice out and the choice in. Currently, for fiscal year '21, there's 121 students who are choicing out of Air Shirley Public Schools. That's 69 students in Air and 52 students in Shirley. That is an additional 11 students from, from last year. Currently, for the fiscal year '23, of 97 students choicing in. And though that is an all-time low, it's important to note that we had 35 students over the summer provide choice in applications. 31 of those applications were denied because we had closed school choice for grade levels based on the academic and social emotional mental health need of our students. That is something that we will look at, we will ask the regional school committee to look at in May and June to possibly reopen. All indications are that that was a good choice. Our internal academic data is, is trending higher, considerably higher than it was last year. So it's not that we don't want school choice in. We wanted to make sure that we were able to meet the needs of our students coming off of that pandemic. So that number 97 isn't because there's a lack of desire to choice in. That number is at 97 because the school committee made the choice to close school choice in and keep class sizes low, especially in early Next, we're gonna take a look at the students who attend charter in Ashob Tech. There are currently 33 students in Air who attend HR to school. That is typically going to be Parker, but there are some students who attend Sizer in Pittsburgh. That's actually one less than last year. There are 31 students in Shirley who attend charter schools. That's six additional. And there are total 64 students who live in Air Shirley who attend a charter school. Really, there's not much of a difference in the trend. That's an additional five from last year, but that was at an all-time high, excuse me, the five-year high, not the all-time high, in fiscal year '18 at 71, and we are currently at, at 64. Now, Ashob Tech is really a similar story. There are 70 students in Air. For fiscal year '23, that's actually nine additional from the previous year. Shirley had 41 students, but that's eight less from the previous year. So we had one additional student. So in fiscal year '23, there was 111 students that attended tech. The year prior, there was 110. We are ranging from 99 to 111 over the past five years. And then our English language learners. The state has, for fiscal year '23, 12.1% of the entire state was English language learners, compared to our district at 4.3% or 71 total students. The high school has eight students or 2% of its population being an English language learner. The middle school has nine students or 2.5% of their population. Laura White has 18 or 5.2%, and Page Hilltop has 36 or 6.8%. You're gonna see the biggest difference here on fiscal year '22 to '23, being Laura White went from three to 18, and that is because we made the decision to have both elementary schools service English language learners. Before this, we were busing students from Laura White into Page Hilltop. We had noticed some of our surrounding communities were audited by the Department of Ed, and the recommendation was made to have English language learners attend in their home school. We decided to be proactive and make that decision and choice last year. We did offer the students who were at Page the opportunity to stay if they wanted to, because Page had become their community. And there were, I believe, two students who, who chose to stay, but the majority of students did want to return and go to Laura White, their home school. Next, our special education enrollments. In fiscal year '23, we had a total enrollment of 1,669. Of that, 290 students are in special education in ASRSD. There's an additional 33 students in special education in out-of-district for a total of 323 students. That's 19.4% of our population. We're actually down over a percentage point from last year. However, we are exactly at the state average of 19.4%. And the percentage of our special education students that are in out-of-district placements as compared to our total population is 10.2, excuse me, as compared to our total number of special education students is 10.2. And the percentage of our special education students in out-of-district placements as compared to our entire enrollment is 2%. Next, I want to talk about the special education out-of-district costs. In fiscal year '23, the costs of placements ranged from $38,496 to $327,961. Projected for fiscal year '24, that goes to 41, excuse me, $41,191 to $350,918. The total cost for fiscal year '23 was $3,1,412 or 8.9% of our budget. The projected cost for next year is $3,201,530 or 9% of our total budget. It is important to note that the OSD approved a 14% increase to day placement and residential schools. And that's where you're seeing that, that big increase.
Okay, this is where I take over. Good evening, everyone, again. This is, I'm not gonna go through every line again this time, because we, we did have the budget presentation on the 18th, and we had, have made some changes, some updates, and some cuts to the preliminary budget. So on the drivers, the top section of revenue, general fund revenue, we've added $50,000 in additional revenue to transportation reimbursement and to Medicaid. So we are short from the prior year, $95,026. In the middle section, the budget drivers, the cost centers, we made cuts of $461,000. Health insurance, we went from 7% to 6%. Charter and choice out, we had originally plugged in the initial or the preliminary FY '23 numbers. We know those are gonna change when Desi reviews the rosters at the end of the year. So we hope that those numbers will, will come down a little bit. We've also reduced the increases to regular transportation and sped transportation for that total of $461,000 in reductions. And in the bottom section, we have added to the circuit breaker fund, $189,000, so we can utilize a full reimbursement next year for that OSD increase to our private residential and day out-of-district tuitions. So we increased that budget for circuit breaker to $975,109. So those were the updates to the drivers and projections. The next slide, the revenues. Again, these are select general fund and a couple of revolving fund revenues, and I believe these stayed pretty constant, except for the medic, increases to Medicaid and the reimbursement from the regional for transportation. So this slide is basically the same. We're about $5,000 off of the revenue for these selected funds over the prior version of the budget on January 18th. Moving on to the history of the regional budget, our general fund is down $814,000 from the prior version. That's a 2.6% increase over FY '23. Looking down, the next change is for all funds, which came in at $35,202,74. That is down from the prior version, $525,000, and that's a 3.3% increase over the prior year. All the other figures following that row are the same. So we'll move on to the assessments. And the assessment, the operating assessment, which does not include debt, has come in at, with these reductions and increases in revenues, the assessment has come down to $20,983,13. That's an $864,000 decrease from the prior assessment from January, the version we had on January 18th. And again, it's a $580,000 increase, 2.8% increase over the prior year. No changes to foundation enrollment, stay the same, capital debt, no changes. And the big changes to the assessments. Okay, so the total operating assessment is coming in at
Who lost you, Bill?
That's a $580,000 increase over the prior year, 2.8% increase. The prior version, that percentage was
Can you hear me, Bill?
Without debt is $12,624,418, which is an increase of $380,222, a 3.1% increase over the prior year. The prior version of the FY '24 budget, we, that was 6.9% to Air, and that's, we made a reduction of 3.8% on the operating budget for Air. And the operating assessment for Shirley has come in at $8,358,595. That's an increase of $205,69, 2.5% increase. Prior version was 7.4%, and that's a decrease of 4.9% for the Shirley operating assessment. We skip down to the operating assessment and debt together. The total of those two, the assessment total is $22,677,395. That's an increase of $892,444 over the prior year, a 4.1% increase. The prior version budget had, this has a 6.1% increase, so that's a 2% reduction in, in the increase for the total operating assessment and debt. Total operating and debt assessment to Air is $13,610,844. That's a total increase of $477,498 over the prior year, which is a 3.6% increase. Prior version of the budget had that as a 7.1% increase, so that's a reduction of 3.5%. And finally, the Shirley total operating assessment and debt comes in at $9,66,551. That's an increase of $414,946, a 4.8% increase over the prior year. And the prior version, version of the budget had this as a 9.5% increase. So Shirley's total operating assessment and debt includes a full effect of the field projects, debt being included in this FY '24 budget. Air has elected to use funds from the CPA to lower their amount. That's why the percentages are, are lower for Air after adding the debt. And they, that will be phased in over two years, so they will feel, they'll see a percentage increase in FY '26, showing them feeling the full effects of that field project yet. So that's where we are currently. I think we made some, some cuts that are pretty conservative, and we make, we moved some of our positions into the grant, some of the special ed paraprofessionals to the, to the grants. And like I mentioned earlier, the health insurance and the cuts to transportation and the sped, sped circuit breaker was a key piece of getting that, those percentages down. And any questions?
Anybody questions?
Bill, moving some of that, some of the positions into the grant money, you know, some of those grants start to time out, how does that affect us in future years on budget building?
Bill, do you want, do you wanna take that? Do you want?
Yeah, I couldn't hear the question. Could you repeat the question?
Moving some of the positions into grants, how does that affect us in future years with budget building?
Well, we try to move people that we know who are retiring, and that has worked out pretty well. We, we did identify a couple folks that are gonna be retiring. We have one piece, one position, actually two, that were one-on-one paraprofessionals that worked exclusively with one student. One was medical, one was vision. So as they graduate, now those positions can be moved to fill other open positions in the district, because we always have movement and we have input from the department heads that, if they're a good employee, we want to keep them. We will move those folks into these open positions, and then we'll be able to take them out of the grant and back into the general fund.
So we're constantly trying to prioritize and move back positions when appropriate.
Anyone else, any questions? I will say you guys really scrubbed these numbers. I was surprised to see what you came down to when you went to the towns.
Mr. Plunkett's MVP. It was, it was a lot of work from, from a lot of people, but Bill was the, the main driver of that, figuring out to bring that assessment down for, for both towns.
How did the presentations go to the boards?
I think well. You know, it's, we'll know better at town meeting, but we think, we think they went well. There didn't seem to be, there were really no questions yesterday in Shirley, correct? And there were a couple clarifying questions tonight in Air, but nothing, nothing major about the budget, or about statements of interest, which we'll talk about in more depth at the next school, uh, school committee meeting.
I think the only Shirley question that had to do with certification of the E and D. We handled that.
Yes, an E and D.
We'll just wait on that, and we'll see how that impacts everything. And the governor's budget comes in, and then we'll see it again in, you know, a couple of weeks. A lot more.
That is correct.
I think, let's get to what, March 1st?
The first week of March. Yeah, I think I might have said March 1st in one of the prior school committee meetings, but I, I guess that one does the entire first week.
Okay.
Yeah. We're hoping, we're hoping it's earlier, but we're not counting on it.
Okay, great. Anyone else have questions before we move on? Okay, so we're gonna move on. Thank you, Dr. Randa and Mr. Plunkett, for all this work. Moving on to item 10, which is policy review report. I'm gonna defer to you, Chris. I'm gonna defer to you, Chris, on what's going on here.
Well, we've got three sections. They are, well, one's short, the other two are not. Um, we have February and March to, I think, get any feedback that we want. To any feedback from the committee that we want to revisit with Dorothy. So we can start with E, um, see how far we get with E. I will note that section E because there's so much that we need to engage with facilities here. There's, I think there's still some where there's open questions about like, is this the policy? Is this what we do? But if folks have had a chance to go through, we can go through. If we haven't, I can voice over the top page for the, for example, section E. There's three pages that summarize, um, the recommendations from MASC. How do folks want to spend their time?
I'll be honest and say that I
You, you haven't committed these to
Well, where I have, I mean, it's all, it's not complete Greek to me, but some summary or narrative would, I think, help me as well.
Great. So I can start with section E. Um, so this is the policy analysis. I think the general guidance from, what just happened? From MASC was there are some, the majority of places, um, where they had feedback was more about, is this a policy that's followed? For example, we have an asbestos management policy. That is something that, um, MASC does not have and they didn't have other examples, um, of those handy. We should, their recommendation was keep it in place. Make sure you still do this. If you want to get rid of it because it's not, asbestos isn't a concern in any of your buildings, feel free to delete that. There are some, what I'll call like nitpicky things that are dated. So for example, under first aid, it says contact the school physician. They would recommend that we take from their policy where they say, um, contact medical personnel. Because you might call, you know, the nurse, you might call an ambulance, not necessarily the physician. There are also some things, so like the no school announcement, um, policy. Um, there's a few others that, um, like bus behavior, that should be in the handbook versus in a policy. So those are the, um, sort of biggest themes across the recommendations that were, um, that were given. The sort of last, sorry, the last big thing is around meals. So we have not updated our meals in, I'll think a few. I should look at the dates on them. MASC has more extensive policies around meals. They recommended that we adopt theirs.
Do they provide, I mean, I, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
If we were to, if I were to scroll through.
So if you scroll, yeah, if you scroll through what is in here. Sorry, my computer just went into, um, go to sleep mode. So if you scroll, oh, there's not in here. I'm sorry, you only see the AIR Shirley version, don't you?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So after that, we probably shouldn't go through E because you can't see the marked up version.
Right.
Oh, because you probably don't have it either, do you? All right. I can follow up with Dorothy.
Okay.
So that's a summary of what's in there. Um, we will get a marked up version that, um, we can look at.
Or at least provides the MASC policy that they're
Yeah, exactly, where they're making the recommendation of what we should, um, look at. Great. After all that, do we want to go to section F?
Are you saying these sheets are not the updated ones? Because I think my packet has both. And I have both.
Do you have both in yours?
I have the AIR Shirley and I have the MASC.
For E?
For E. Yep, I have both.
You.
Are they back-to-back, Jim, or are they, like, how is it?
They're right next to each other, all the way through, just like they were for the, the, the
Oh, maybe they are in here, but they're not labeled? Oh, so they are in here. The bottom, so the footer is not going to help you. Um, you'll need to look at the file name. So for example, if you are, um, I'll make this easy. The first policy, policy EB, safety program. The first page of that is the AIR Shirley version. The second EB in your packet is the MASC version. Um, so they are back-to-back, but you'll need to scan closely to make sense of it.
Was it show?
It's where it says source at the bottom of the policy. You might see like the legal references and the date where the policy was approved or changed.
Mm-hmm.
You'll see source, uh, AIR Shirley or source, MASC. Okay.
Great.
I see that now.
Yeah. I made the mistake of scrolling to one, that was two pages and didn't see, and bottom saw that it said AIR Shirley, and that was confusing. Okay, so Jim, I know that you've got some questions or comments.
Well, I have, I mean, I have a lot of, I went through just like the last time. It went fairly quick with points, specific questions, but I think where other people had had the opportunity to to review, they probably want to look in before I start saying what I like and what I don't like.
Okay.
But it moved along, I thought, very quickly last time, once everybody had a chance to see
Yeah.
what was in front of them, but clearly they didn't have a chance to see the MASC policy compared to it.
Yeah.
I think it will be moved for me to go through this at this point.
Okay.
I do think, Jim, it might be helpful if you provide your comments to Chris, at least to that. I mean, it depends on how many there are, but if there's a lot, okay.
Well, they were, they were, um, I think they had, they gave their review on what they were thinking about when they were reviewing. Then I just took a look at what they put in front of me and they said, all right, this is just a minor change here. This is, you know, some of it's wording, some of it's lines, some of it's a paragraph, some I like ours better than theirs, some I like theirs better than ours. So it's nothing earth-shattering, but I think if we are, we're all started on the same page, it'll go way quicker, because then we'll be able to like, look at the changes and then vote it up or down and just move to the rest. Over the vote goes, it's the way it goes.
I mean, I don't know that I would necessarily need much from the recommendations of MASC. So I'm okay if you wanted to do that or if you wanted to take time for everyone to be able to review them, that's fine.
Kevin, would you prefer we next week go through and give you a week to read? Otherwise, I'm happy to take notes on your comments, Jim, and make sure that we can, that's what we'd have to do. You know, if we can do one policy, a meeting, it keeps us moving and not spending hours on it.
I mean, I think if we could do some of it tonight, just because we had somewhat of a shorter agenda and then next week, it sounds like there's a couple of things that we have.
It's stacked, yeah.
So I'd rather do some of it.
Perfect, great.
At least, at least if Jim could provide, you know, like
The voiceover or like questions are great, and then if there isn't general consensus.
I just don't want to put too much on for next week because
Agreed.
Yeah, that works for me.
Great. EB safety program. I actually like the, the, uh, MASC. It's, they're exactly the same as if we have a paragraph at the bottom. But in the bottom paragraph, it says, you know, we have to follow the instructions in the order in which they are listed. Okay, we're, but, and then there's no way to know what crisis that you're going to have to cover.
Yeah.
There's going to be hurricane, tornado, whatever's going on. So I think there's no way to do the last paragraph.
Yeah.
So I think the MASC policy is clear, because if you get in a crisis situation, you're just going to be reliant on the people that are in control to be good on their feet.
Great.
When we get into, um, pest management program. I was okay with ours and except in the first paragraph, it says that our IPM will be out filed with the state. Now, I don't know where you would file that or who is supposed to get that. There's no, there's no reference to where that would go.
That was one of the questions that we have to follow up with the facilities team.
Then I get to, uh, EB AB and it says in there that we have to have three-year re-inspections. And we probably would have to, after the inspection, have a, a list of exposure locations somewhere.
This is the asbestos one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have many questions about that one. It was like, do we have asbestos in the district? Um, and if so, yeah, it'd be helpful to
And we have to, it says in there, we have to have a three-year re-inspection. And I don't know where we put that file, if it's in the module, if it's actually do that.
Two of the four schools.
Okay.
And there is an asbestos binder in the schools that have that. That tells us, there's reports that tells us everything that's hot in the building.
Got it.
EBB first aid. I kind of wanted to keep the, the MASC version in. Our version, we have an extra paragraph that has no young child who will ill-urge or be sent home or an older child unless the illness or injury is minor. And I have no way to tell who a young child and who an older child is.
Yes.
I think we're just better off without that. I think the person on the ground looks at the kid and said, they're going to be okay or they're not going to be okay.
Mm-hmm.
I think that paragraph is no good. So outside of that, it's exactly the same as the MASC, so I think we should just keep that.
Yeah.
Use of automatic defibrillators. The only change I had in there was with ours. Um, we had the, the, um, in the second paragraph, it has the school district physician to monitor the program. I, I think probably our, our nurses in a better position. I, I don't know how, how involved the, the school district physician is on a day-to-day basis.
Not very.
Right. So I think if we, if we are going to have something where we're going to have people, a certain amount of people training this stuff, we're in a better position to control that than them. They have other things to do where they're not going to be thinking about us. So it'll be easier for, for Renee to do it than it will be to ask the, the school physician to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, Dylan.
To EBC. I think, I, I think that for emergency plans, you need some flexibility. Theirs really laid out a lot of stuff with annual reviews and, and specific things, protocols that had to happen. And I don't think we could reasonably expect anybody to stay on top of. Your lists that have to be maintained, the strains, there's all sorts of things that have to happen. And I think it's, I think if it's on the page, it's not, eventually it's just not going to happen. You know, in ours, emergency plans, like figure out what things you are important for us and we have to plan for, and you can plan for it the way that you want and it meets the requirement.
Right.
And then the, uh, no school announcement policy, EBC, DR, we just jumped that thing, we don't do that. Shirley no longer blows their horn, we're a little close enough to hear
I love nothing more than reading that policy.
That's awesome.
What's that?
What is the 333?
Apparently, uh, the, Jim, you probably know this. How did, Charlie wants to know what the 333 thing was.
The fire whistle used to blow. This is this ongoing thing, it was a battle for longest time. The fire whistle would blow, um, also at six o'clock at night and at noon.
I feel like, like our town, like I grew up in Westford, I feel like we did that too. It was like some more that blew when
Right, yeah, right.
Didn't have school.
And we fought because
I remember that happening when there was no school.
God, I feel old.
So there were people arguing all the time that, you know, they shouldn't be blowing it, there's no point to this anymore. But it was, you know, they're firemen, so it's about tradition. It's not that it has to make sense. It's what we've always done until a really cantankerous woman moved on to Hasbro Street, which was right next to the fire station. And she had a newborn and she went over there. You know, the kid was colicky, it was crying, it just went to bed. And then it was six o'clock, like nobody has a clock, they have to hear the fire whistle thing go off. So she went over there and blew him out of the water the next week. No more fire whistle, we're all set. Good with that. All right. The EBCFA airborne virus protection. Um, ours is better, theirs only deals with COVID.
Yeah.
You know? And, uh, the only change I made, um, in ours was I added under the first one, because we, we, we put in it specifically that the AIR Shirley Regional School Committee is the sole determinant of the initiation, suspension, or amendment to the policy.
Mm-hmm.
Right? But we didn't, one thing we had to oversight, we didn't, this is going to be in the policy manual, but we didn't put anywhere in here, it's going to say, are we doing this now or not, doing this now or not? So I just added a sentence that said, the superintendent's office will record this poli, will record whether this policy is in active or inactive status. So if anybody had a question whether you had, it will be evident if people were around MASC, but that's the only thing, just to clarify. So if somebody picked up the policy manual and said, you're not living to your policy, so the superintendent, you go to his office and say, well, the school committee voted on this day to suspend the policy. So it's inactive, that's it. Building and ground security, which is ECA. There was, uh, nothing on the, uh, propping of doors open, which I know is like a colossal no-no in today's age. And I couldn't find that anywhere here. So I thought that probably needed to be thrown into there.
Yeah, that's a good question, and I'm trying to
I'm pretty much sure everybody's instructed. John, what do you know about that?
Yeah, that's, um,
Mr. Quinte, I'm sorry, I was actually looking at the security cameras in the school policy because we're looking to, to put that in. So if you could repeat that question, I'd be happy to tell you what I know about it.
ECA, we have the same policy as MASC, but neither mention anything about door propping. Um, so I'm going to go to ECA. I'm assuming that's in the handbook, but we also
So are you proposing that you would add something that says door propping? I mean, I'm just wondering
Door propping is a, is a big no-no.
Right, but
Right, so it's, I think it should be somewhere in, we should just add something into the po, I didn't see it in the policy here. It's one thing that everybody knows and everybody does, but
We would like that in the policy. Door propping is a huge problem.
Yeah.
No matter how often we remind people it happens.
Right.
We're actually just submitted a grant. We're actually just submitted a grant for $50,000 for the two elementary schools in the middle schools to update, update the middle school key card system and add a key card system. So that teachers or whoever else don't have a desire to prop doors. So to have it in the policy would be extremely helpful to us.
I think it's probably implied in the third paragraph, access to school buildings and grounds outside regular hours. Or yes, no. Second paragraph, thank you. Yeah, the maintenance of a secure locked building.
The only reason I was saying that is because it doesn't, it doesn't seem to me that it gets that specific. Like, I get what you're saying, but there's no, you know, it doesn't, this is very general as far as I read it.
Right.
You know, windows or whatever. I mean, there's other things that could be kind of left open or whatever that this doesn't.
Yeah.
It just came into my head from the whole voluntary thing.
Yeah, well, it doesn't. The thing is, it specifies how access that access should be maintained or monitored for outside of school hours. It feels like there should be something that references more explicitly. Yeah, I don't know. I could see it being something that we call out more explicitly with in the second paragraph.
We do try to limit any work going on during the day, but but some, if you have a plumbing emergency, that's when they can come.
Yeah.
That's when they can come. To get back to the door propping in the connection with the key, if we have a key card system, we could actually give a temporary key card to a contractor so they can get in and out. They wouldn't have a need to prop the door. If they don't return the key card, we simply inactivate the key card. With a key, if someone walks off with a key, we're stuck, right? We need to call a locksmith. We need to have lock, locks changed. So it is. Propping, propping doors is an issue. I mean, if you remember Fox 25, three, four, five years ago, Charlie, I know you're going to remember this, they were driving to random schools and trying to just open doors.
Great.
I hope I just not plant that idea for that to happen again.
Seriously, let's do an all staff email tomorrow. Let's make sure our doors blow.
We, it is, it's something that is, people are reminded regularly. Now, it's not, it's not really a problem at the high school. Teachers have key cards. So hopefully, we'll have key cards at all the schools soon so that it will bring down the need to do that. But it's not just our employees. We can give these key cards to contracted workers. And then the important thing is we can turn that off at any time if it's not returned. So it is just a much safer system than what we currently have. And when you have a keyed system like we do at Page, you're going to find prop doors. No matter how many times we tell people, we do remind people often, someone always props the door. The rationale is just for a minute, I'm just grabbing something from the outside. And often people forget that a door is propped. I've found them propped open. Charlie, I'm sure you have found them propped open in this. Not that just by having it in the policy will make everyone stop, but it's, I think it's a, it's a nice addition.
All right.
Can tell I don't like prop doors.
I see that.
Yeah.
It's on the family there.
Yeah.
In high schools, they're particularly challenging.
PTSD is going on over there.
Well, former principals dealing with prop doors, yeah.
Then we get down to E C A C vandalism. Maybe we just get rid of that. Vandal, that's a crime. Treat it like a crime and do what you have to do or some other. I just think we don't need an independent policy for vandalism. For security cameras in school, the only question I had was what we wanted to do for length of retention. You know, those kind of videos get used and also what the place is, it says that we have to retain them, but there were no time limits. And I think we should figure out, now data storage isn't as bad as it used to be. You don't have to worry about, you know, V H S tapes, piles of them and stuff around. I don't know. Especially in today's, you know, to this world where all sorts of activities can happen and they'll be looking for background information or whatever they had. So I, and I don't even know what a good standard would be. If it's three months, I have no idea. We should say something, but I don't know what that one thing is. So we can think about that.
That's a great question.
It's a good question. I'll also note, this is one that Dr. Rendo, you and your team may want to look at specifically about the like. The, this is one that Joyce and I went in circles around for about 40 minutes about the who has access to what video when and what the procedure is to access that. So it's worth, like, if you haven't looked at it closely, this is one maybe think about ultimately, like, I came to the, like, superintendent should be managing that. You shouldn't just be handing them out, but like, you can. Yeah.
That, that may be answered. I'm not positive of this. I'll have to look at the M O U that we have currently with the air police department.
Yeah.
That might be handled in there because there are cameras in the high school.
Okay.
But I, I don't know offhand, but that is a, that's a great point. We're going to need a procedure and that should probably be in the policy.
Yeah. Well, even thinking about like who, if you're out, like who, just making sure that we are.
Right.
Or like, if you're in this building and something happens that law and, you know, police department shows up, hey, can we see the cameras? You know, does Beth Lewis give them access? Do they need to call you thinking through that situation? So I know that was one that had some healthy debate.
Then we get to E D C, which is the loaning school apartment equipment property. I just read them both and I thought ours was even a little bit more explicit, but it seemed, it was short and simple. And I thought we'd just keep ours over there. Just my, my opinion to my read. Six hundred and waste reduction, that's good. Get to student transportation services. On all the stuff with that and the buses, I got into really the, how we want to handle now that we have our little van, how much of this stuff is now going to apply? Because before, when we were talking about buses, we had all the protections of contract with the bus. But now some of that goes away and you absorb some of the responsibilities.
And sorry, is this E E A C?
Uh, E E A.
Interestingly, this is one where we match almost identically with mask.
Until we got our own bus. And we just have to figure out whether our bus applies to these or not.
Yeah, that's a great question.
You guys can think about that as you're reading. Think, because I, I used to thought about it a long time and I'm not really clear what to do, so.
I mean, I think the distinguishing factor is that the bus doesn't, or the van, as far as I know, doesn't transport students to and from school? Or does it? Like, it would transport kids to sporting activities or a field trip or something like that.
Right.
I mean, there should be something governing the use of that.
Really, I think number three is probably the biggest concern. But as long as it is driven by a school employee, then they're going to be query checked. So that wouldn't be an issue.
One, one way of dealing with this simpler, I thought, might be that if we make a decision that stuff, we're talking about student transportation, would that meant to and from a school or with contracted buzzing? Then we have to come up with our new thing for the internal bus. I thought that would really simplify things.
Yeah, I think that's kind of what I was getting at.
Yeah. Well, and I don't know if this gets that, if you look at, again, mask and Air Shirley are very similar. But mask, for example, references bus contractors, 70 contractors and school districts. So implying that like we would be one of the possible operators. Are responsible for the safe operation of school buses. And I know that it's generally referenced as like getting to and from school, but it doesn't necessarily need to be in that order. You might be going from and back to school, right? Like, in the event of a sporting event, you're providing transportation from the school and back to the school. So I think that van would fall under this with the assumption that we adopted the mask version, which is similar. Now, one thing it doesn't have is. It's funny, it looks really similar. It's got the same number of bullets, but for example, we have query checks. They don't. They just reference qualifications and examinations of bus drivers. I would assume with D, we have a requirement for query checks for bus drivers? Maybe we don't.
I'll, I will, I will double check, but I can't imagine that there isn't. I don't want to tell you that there absolutely isn't.
So that would be a question, but if we, that, again, there's a few subtle changes. If we wanted to adopt the mask version, that would probably cover the van.
Yeah.
Better. The thing that we would want to look at is making sure, understand what our contract with D has in terms of query checks and would add that in.
I wonder if it's a D requirement, like an employee, like.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Or an employment.
Well, they're alone with children and typically anyone spending time alone, unsupervised with a child needs a query check. So I would think that they are, but we will find out for sure.
Yeah.
We'll put that in the superintendent's report.
Yeah, assume that's in the, in the contract. And that's one of their requirements, in which case it's sort of covered, but we may want to spell out explicitly in our policy. Okay.
Going to the E A A and walkers. Walkers and riders. I was looking at that and I just put a note said, Adam. So I said, do you want this out? So I don't care if we have it, but I mean, I sit here, ultimately, it says, he gives some general guidelines and then it says that you can do what you want. So if that's really, if we can do what we want, then we can just sort of like get rid of it. It seems to happen anyway, so I'm more like, the less stuff you have, the better off you are. We kind of figure out who's going to take the bus and who's not going to take the bus without giving any guidelines and stuff. And if there's a problem, we just sort of work it out. So I'd rather not have a piece of paper that says, these are the guidelines that you'll have to override.
Yeah.
And just call the shot the way you see.
We don't have a policy now in our. So this is, this would be additional.
Well, there's an M G L that we have to follow. There's mass general law.
Right.
Which is, which is this.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. So we're following this now. And being a regional district, we offer transportation to anyone who lives in Air Shirley. So, I mean, there are, there are students who live across the street from Page. Like, literally, if they cross the street, they're on Page Hilltop property, they take the bus. That's one of the first questions that I asked, but it's, you know, the kid likes to take the bus, it's fine. So anyone who wants to take the bus can. And we do, we do comply with mass general law, so.
So living in a town the size of Air, most people are probably within that radius that we wouldn't have to provide.
Yeah, it was just, it was interesting, I saw the kid got on the bus, drove about 30, 30 seconds to school and got off the bus. It's great.
So leave it out? Or add it in?
I don't, I mean, I don't. If we don't have one now, and we're, I don't know, I probably would agree with Jim, like, why have something?
Yeah, I think.
I mean, we have to follow law anyway.
We have to follow law. I think the one, if we wanted to. Wow. Are you saying for a regional school district, you are required to provide transportation for every student?
Regardless of distance. So this wouldn't even.
This wouldn't even matter us. That explains why we don't have this policy. Great. We should not include it.
Can I give you a live update? The bus has confirmed that they require fingerprinting and query checks for employees.
Tremendous. We can add that in a dot mask.
Like, it says to E E A C, school bus scheduling errandings. Anything informative about that, we should just get rid of it. It says that you're going to have to schedule school routes and do as good as you can to get all the students to the schools. We probably don't need a policy to tell you to do that.
No.
Yeah, that is a uniquely, that is an Air Shirley only policy, so.
One year must not have gotten done.
So we get to E E A E, school bus safety program. Just got to that whole, you probably can't even say anymore. Remember the fire tolls you do when you're in high school? Well, all your friends were in the car, stop, stop at the light, run and stuff. Well, apparently, we're supposed to do that twice a year with.
We do.
Bus trips. You roll through that.
And then they help you jump out the back of the bus?
Yeah, it happens twice a year. Kids love it.
I would love it.
What day is that? Can we be there for that?
Do you do that? Do we do that onsite here?
We do it onsite.
Do it onsite?
Yep. Yep. And when they get dropped off in the morning and we have to remind adults not to help the kids. But typically, two of the, the older kids, if you're in the elementary school, will help younger kids jump off. It's, it's actually great to see, but they're helping each other get off the bus and the kids are very excited about it. Not so much at the middle and high school, but the elementary school, they love it.
The one piece of feedback on that one from masks was. Oh, gosh, what was it? They refer, what is this? E E A C?
E A E.
A E E. So we, where is this? Oh, number six, parents of kindergarten youngsters are asked to meet their children at the bus stop each day. It was thought that that might be better suited for a handbook than a policy.
Oh, I was looking at the mask.
Misspelled kindergarten?
Yeah.
A helpful hint that a more crowded school district sometimes present difficulty. Thank you for letting us know that.
So we might want to pull that.
Yeah, I think.
I'm sorry, are you asking to pull six where the parent to meet the kids at the bus? That might be an M G L, but there are going to be probably a lot of concerns about dropping off a five-year-old without someone at the bus stop for them.
Yeah, if you look at the next page, the second two, so our five and six are not required by M G L. Those are ones that are unique to us.
Five and six?
Five and six. So parents encouraged to meet the bus driver, parents of kindergarten, kindergarten youngsters are ones that we authored and are not requirements, at least according to our mask consultant.
For some reason, I feel like though any elementary school student, if a parent is not at home.
I think it's five-year-olds only. And then someone 18-year-old, doesn't have to be a parent, 18-year-olds are typically. I think it's five-year-olds only. And then someone eighteen-year-old, does have to be a parent, eighteen-year-olds are typically. I'm sorry? Yeah, we can.
We look it up.
We'll research that. I thought that was MGL. I mean, I'm not aware by any means, but, and Mask is saying that's not required.
They were saying, yeah.
Or is that the one that you said was referenced in the handbook?
They said that that was not required. So again, like. The school bus safety program, number five, parents encouraged to meet the bus driver, number six. Parents of kindergartners are asked to meet the children at the stop every day were. Unique to the Air Shirley version. They're.
So you can put them in the handbook?
Yeah, their response was, the first additional paragraph may be appropriate to conclude, however, the last one was better suited for an elementary student handbook.
Yeah, I certainly don't think there's anything wrong with encouraging parents to be meeting the bus, but maybe not in the policy maybe like.
Unless it's required, because I mean, I remember being told that I needed to meet the bus for my kindergartner.
Yeah, well, I would want a parent, you know, I would want that as from a liability standpoint, you would want.
What happens now if there isn't an adult at the stop? At times the driver will make some other stops and sometimes surf back to see if the parent is there. Otherwise they, they return to the school.
Yeah.
Yeah, and. You know, having, it was, it was, it's a great policy and the biggest pain of a policy as far as being an elementary principal, but at least we know the five-year-old is with, even if they're at school. So let me, let, I'll, I'll do some research to find out.
We could keep it. Right? Like the reality is like, just because it's a, not a law, doesn't mean we don't make it a policy.
Yeah. I'm just thinking that five-year-old whose parent's there every day and then for some reason isn't and they get off the bus and everybody leaves and they're petrified, right? And I've dealt with that in the past too, where the bus driver mistakenly left the five-year-old off and I'm speeding to a bus stop. As the building principal, because there's, there's that young child. So let me look into it more. I, I would sleep at our night knowing we have that in our policy.
Then we should keep it in our policy. No one, I mean.
I would probably change some of that language.
Yeah, we can certainly clean it up.
Yeah, I don't know that you need to specify it to parents, like it can be an adult, but it should be a familiar, a familiar adult or a familiar.
Or the word youngsters. Okay.
EEAEA, bus driver examination and training and EEAEA dash one drug and alcohol testing plus commercial vehicle drivers. All the stuff in there is required if you have a CDL license. And the people from D have some advantage, random drug and alcohol testing. There's no reason for us to have either one of these policies. They can't, they can't get a license if they're not doing that. D can't operate that way, so we don't need to do anything with that.
Yeah, and that was, they're saying that the, for EEAEA, that the mask policy just recaps the requirement. The adoption is at our discretion. For dash one. It was a similar piece of feedback and it just adds, it provides for the district. Gosh, this language is. It gives the district procedures to have in place in the event of a positive result.
But D would be the first one to get the positive result and they, they have to take their immediate action.
Right, that would be my assumption as well, that D is managing. Where is it?
If we don't employ any of the bus drivers, we can't do anything.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but.
Although.
We can see that D do something if they're not.
They have to sit, when they do the drug and alcohol testing, if you fail, then D has to talk to the person, because they're in a consortium with, where they do the random testing. They have to meet with the director of the consortium before they could turn that on. So there's a whole protocol for that stuff.
Yeah.
And their CDL gets immediately suspended with private vehicles. So they can't drive.
Yeah, I mean.
Then they can, they can get back to citizenship driving once they work with the person from the, the, the testing agency to prove that they're. That they're okay now, but then they're testing free from D goes, all these other rules.
I still don't know why we would have to strike it. It does say that it's in there too, so that's our expectation.
Yeah. I mean, we don't have this policy now. It's just a question, do we want to add this policy? It's extra paper. It's maybe a safeguard, although again, like D is managing it. It's not on us to manage. I think if we were managing. A transportation department within our district, if we weren't contracting it out, it would be, you'd obviously, it'd be essential. It may be less essential for Air Shirley.
Here, even like for bus driver examination training, each driver will file with school officials a medical certificate. And proof of freedom from tuberculosis. So every bus driver is going to have to give that to us.
Where is that? Is that a tip policy?
I am fine leaving these out. Unless there's a excitement about adding them. Or even just, I don't even need excitement, even just.
You're talking the EEAEA and B?
EEAEA and EEAEA dash one.
Right.
Yeah.
We got EEAC, student conduct on school buses. That was, I'm okay with ours. There really was not much difference between the two, so it's probably just fine. We got to EEAC dash R. And I changed on the first sentence. In case of any misconduct on the bus, the incident will be reported in writing. So that would just mean that, you know, a bus driver comes in and they're PO'd about something that happened on the bus, they're going to have to write it down because somebody's going to have to try to recreate what happened. But I'm not, I don't think we need a proper form, as long as they, you know, they write down whatever happens, okay? And at that stage. If there's a problem on a bus with a discipline issue, I think them and the principal can handle it and on the first occurrence, I don't think they need to give the superintendent a copy. I just struck that with a copy to the superintendent. You know, if you get to two or three times, then it's going to come up to your ladder, but on the first time through, you kind of let the principal handle whatever's happening there.
One note about this policy, one, it's unique to Air Shirley. There aren't others that have this. This is handled in most handbooks. It's also in section J, so we have multiple.
Which one is this one?
Student conduct on school buses, EEAC dash R. And so this details what. Will happen if there's misconduct on the bus, how students will get on and off the bus, disturbances that are prohibited. So I think there's both a question of like, do we want this policy? Do we want it in this section or section J, which I can't remember what section J is?
J is student.
Student conduct.
It's just students.
Or stu, yeah, students. Or. And if we want to keep it in this or section J, do we want to make changes to it?
Just initially, I would say if it's going to be anywhere, it should be J.
I agree. Yep, totally.
But I'm not making a judgment on if it should be there either at this point.
Let's kick the can to section J. We can decide when we get to J, what do we want to do with it.
We'll go to that. Brings us to EEAG, student transportation in private vehicles. I don't think any of this really happened.
I was just going to say that. Does this even happen?
No. I mean, Darren filled out a mini-van to go to swim practice every day and Sierra fills a mini-van to go to swim practice every day and probably same thing happens with hockey. Right? Who, who can drive and who can carry him?
I mean, I just know even like, that's why I was reading this and I'm, I'm assuming that this is referring to sport, like sports practices and stuff, correct? Because even like, say when the baseball team didn't have a field here and they were all going down to Laura White, they were driving in private vehicles and I'm sure. I mean, that's why I like the fact that we have this van now, because that always made me uncomfortable to have the kids caravanning like that unless parents. Are consenting to their kids riding with other students. It's just. Dangerous, but.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I don't know how you really get around it, right? But I think it happens and I don't think any of this happens.
Yeah, I don't think any, well, I don't, I don't have a high school. I don't know what happens here. I remember what happened when I was in high school.
You piled in the minivan.
There's less seatbelts. The one. I mean, I guess this is a question like how often, or not even how often, are there examples where. You know, transportation's happening to and from the school by. Staff or parents outside of the van that's like organized. Right? Like is there an event where it's like, we're going to the robotics tournament and we're organizing this carpool?
All the time.
And.
Yep.
In the, in those cases, are we doing? Anything in turn, like. Again, this is specifying the amount of liability, personal liability insurance the person has. Mask recommends that we should say that any of those drivers or any other adults in the car are Cory checked.
I think with robotics that happens, because they're all on tours.
Right, I'm sure they're doing that for robotics, but I don't.
This is not happening.
Yeah.
The typical liability on a, on a car for a high schooler is probably twenty thousand dollars. That's the minimum of the state, I believe.
Yeah.
I don't know how we would check that. I don't know how we would police any of this.
We have to, the swim sectionals in Springfield, they have to be there for seven, so Sierra is going to meet the Air Shirley. Littleton Harvard kids at Dunkin' Donuts at five-ten. And there's going to be eight girls going to Springfield.
Right.
Driving?
We see her driving.
I think that diff, like this policy is in the event of like. Is the coach organizing that or the kid, like again, there's a difference between. Me and my neighbor.
Both, both.
But that, that's, that's not an excuse though. That's just like, that's like, what's the word I'm looking for? Like whether the coach organizes it or not, the coach knows those kids are getting there somehow, right? Like that's burying your head in the sand.
Well, right, but the liability of it, right? So from a liability perspective, if the school. Is organizing or has transportation to and from activities and. I don't know, it, it does feel like there's a difference between like, parents are responsible for getting their, you know, kids to an event. And the parents organize a carpool. Feels different than, we're going to this event, there aren't buses available, so we're going to use, you know. You know, these two drivers, this teacher, this volunteer and this parent are going to like drive all the kids.
We certainly wouldn't organize, help organize a carpool of student drivers.
Right.
We, we might inform parents that, that transportation is not available. We would need the parents to drive their, their child there. If something happens. After that.
Right.
That would not be from our recommendation.
Yeah, exactly. So I think like that, again, it's in different circumstances. You're telling parents they need to organize transportation to and from. That puts the liability on those families to get their children to and from, whether they're taking. Public transportation, an Uber or, you know, riding with their neighbors. I think this is purely in the place of the school saying, we don't have a school bus and we are going to like. You know, have Mr. Christie drive. Five kids.
I would say I, I would talk to some of the other schools that like, oh, say Brownfield's the, the host school for the swim dive team, right, with us and Littleton. So this affects us in Littleton because, well, also affects Brownfield because they don't have transportation to the pool.
Right.
Right? So I think we should talk to pretty much anybody involved in, anyone involved in a co-op is going to see this. Like the Harvard, Brownfield kids coming over here to a football practice, they're driving, you know, so. I would, I would sort of reach out and figure out, you know, we know it happens. Do we want to either get involved or sit there and say. Or let kids and parents know that if your kid is involved in a co-op program, we do not provide transportation to practices for this sort of stuff. So it's up to you to make sure that. Your kid is, something has to happen when you sign up for a co-op because that's when this all happens.
And I would, I would add to that, like, it's really the host school that's bearing the brunt of the responsibility of this. Because if anything were to happen on the swim ride, which I'm not throwing any bad karma out there, but, or whatever, anywhere.
Right.
It's the host school that's going to, so if we're ever hosting as a co-op.
We can, we do for, for football.
And I think that to Jim's point, it needs to be made clear to members of the other towns that if there's no transportation provided.
Right.
You know. Can't be on Air Shirley, but because who's, who's the parent going to blame first?
I can reach out to Linda and see if she knows more about this. Certainly, that'd be an easy conversation to have.
Just as a note, like, this is our current policy, one, two, and three, four is the, and Mask is saying, like, your policy matches what we have. Except for, we recommend schools adopt the additional Cory check. So we were the ones who initially wanted to have, or I don't know if we got it from someplace else, but they're like, oh yeah, this is. Totally normal to require, you know, at least a hundred thousand dollars worth of.
Yeah, I'm not so sure.
What would that, insurance for seventeen?
It's associated with this, nothing to do with what the bigger problems are.
Yeah.
Right? So the insurance coverage is not really the issue. So I, I would just say, almost all the schools now are hosting some co-op, right? For the preparation, I would talk, you got your little superintendent's network thing?
Like, we do.
Right? So can you reach out to them, say, look, this is, everybody knows.
EEAG, what do you got?
This is not happening.
I could get that on the list.
Why do you want to deal with this?
Probably later tonight, actually.
Right, great, okay.
I mean, it, it happens even though, even in a non-co-op situation, when thinking about like the scenario where we might be sending kids to Peroni to practice. And they're piling into.
The bus doesn't show up for golf.
All that's, yeah, right.
Bussing is, is still an issue.
Right.
It was a bigger issue last year as the field was, was, was unavailable. So we had, we had, in baseball, we had baseball in Lemonster, we added at Peroni. We had, I mean, we had spring sports all over the place. So yeah, I mean, and a lot of that, a lot of this happened. So, you know, we can, we can certainly look into that.
Yeah. Do we want to adopt the policy on motor vehicle idling on school grounds, which we do not have? There are some legal references. That. Mask recommended we consider. So this is EEAJ.
I wanted to add a line that said, assistant superintendent should monitor all idling.
All idling vehicles.
Throughout the winter. It's, I understand what they're doing, I understand what they're doing in this scene. No one is going to be the idling police. I mean, it would just be another piece of paper in here. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but, you know, people have remote starts, so their cars are warm when they get in.
Yeah.
You know, you know, that's going to happen. I mean, and if you're sitting in the car for a while because you're cold at the football game, you're going to go back there, you're going to turn the car on, you're going to turn the heat on. So I. I don't think there's any way for us to comply to this.
What is idling? I'm sorry, but like sitting there with your car on?
Right.
Not to exceed. Three minutes in a fifteen-minute period or.
That's like the, the pickup line. I mean, when parent pickup is going to, you're going to be in line longer than three minutes.
Um. Except, well, that is allowed. Right? So like you can, you can drop your kids off, you can wait to pick your kids up. But what you. Can't do is, you know, pull up to the school for half an hour. But what you can't do is, you know, pull up to the school for half an hour in the middle of the day and just like sit in that. Turnaround in front of Laura White.
With those extreme cases, we can address that without a policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, would it be like a fire lane or something like that or?
Well, yes, but any visitor to a school that is just.
Just hanging out.
Hanging out in the parking lot is a security concern, we would ask them to leave. There's other issues with, with parents who have multiple kids and some infants. And it could be winter, it could be like Friday, and you wanna leave your car running as you're getting or either picking up or dropping off your other child after a doctor's appointment. You know, I don't know if we wanna tell moms, we don't wanna tell moms with infants that their kid's gonna be cold, right? Just like we don't wanna wake them up with the fire whistle. But we can, we can police the severe cases of this.
Yeah.
And in fact, I think if you ask the building principals, is there anybody that does this, they could probably, if there is, they could name who those parents are. And probably already have addressed it. But it's, it's just a different world, cars almost are coming, like you said, with remote start, right? And you're gonna have a car idling and no one's sitting in it, hey? And I think those go for 15 minutes before they shut off?
Depends on the age of the car.
Great, we will leave, we can leave this out. Happy to save paper.
That scenario is actually.
EFC, Free and Reduced Price of Food Services. Ours is okay, but we met and I think probably next time we'll have the updated ADF for steel with it, with what's specifying. EFD, Lameal Charge Policy, I don't know. Okay, and that turns E for me.
Great. Any other thoughts? Additions or amendments? Great. All right, that's all I've got for policy, we'll save, maybe since we have a jam-packed agenda, we save F for the first meeting in March and G for the second meeting in March.
That might be a good idea.
I will also get this top sheet, I'll share that with Michelle so that you have this for F and G, because that's. Yeah, actually, we could probably do, I think F and, I think, yeah. We can probably do F and G together, I think F was like a 15-minute discussion.
Okay, great, so we're gonna.
Well, but we'll do it at the beginning of March.
Great.
Although F right now, I would make a motion that we accept F as is.
Do we wanna vote on F, do you wanna? Let's do it in March. We'll give Joyce and Eric. You know what, I, Michelle got real excited that we were gonna vote on one. You were like, we can do it. First.
Vote?
Yeah, we can do them both at the same time.
All right, so I'm gonna move on.
Great.
Item 11, Other Topics Not for Discussion Not Reasonably Anticipated 48 Hours in Advance of This Meeting, does anyone have anything? Please say no, okay, good. And then number 12, Chair Person's Notes. And number 13, Communications, which I think is normally air. But I will take a volunteer to read tonight.
All right, announcements for February 7th, 2023. Wednesday, February 8th, Incoming Kindergarten Information Presentation Hosted by Page Hilltop Elementary will be 5:00 to 6:00. It will be virtual, presumably a link has been shared on our website. Also, Wednesday, February 8th, is a 90-minute early release for students and professional development for teachers. Lunch will be served. Dismissal time for the high school, middle school is 12:50, law and Page Hilltop is 1:45. Thursday, February 9th, Half Day of School for Grades 6 through 8 and Evening Conferences. Students will be dismissed at 11:20. Friday, February 10th, Half Day of School for Grades 6 through 8 and Afternoon Conferences. Students will again be dismissed at 11:20. Monday, February 13th, Progress Reports Issued for Students in Grades Preschool Through 5. Wednesday, February 15th, FY24 Public Budget Hearing and School Committee Meeting. 6:00 PM in the middle school library, just checking that time, it's 6:00 PM. Great, it's 6:30 at the middle school library. Thursday, February 16th, Incoming Kindergarten Information Presentation Hosted by Page Hilltop Elementary. That'll be 10:00 to 11:00 AM, it's virtual, see website for link. Thursday, February 16th, Little Panthers Integrated Preschool Team Annual Preschool Registration Information Session for the school year 23-24. And that'll be 4:00 PM, it will be virtual, see our website for the link.
Thank you, Chris. I'm guessing there's no need for executive session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Executive, all those executive workers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're adjourned at 8:59, thanks guys.